Welcome to your city commission meeting. Today is Tuesday, July 28th, 2020. Please turn off or silence all cell phones during the meeting. Meetings are televised every day on Channel 2 at 7:00 PM and midnight, and available for viewing on YouTube and Facebook Live. The Leavenworth City Commission meeting will be open to the public with limited seating capacity. To reserve a seat, email C. Williamson at firstcity.org no later than 4:00 PM on July 28th, which of course is today. Seats will be available on a first come, first served basis. To mitigate the spread of COVID-19, face coverings and social distancing are required. To attend the meeting, in accordance with the Kansas Open Meeting Act, the meeting can be viewed on Channel 2 and via Facebook Live. The public is encouraged to continue to view the meeting via Facebook Live or Channel 2 and to submit public comments to be read during the public comments portion of the meeting, and questions on agenda items to be read during discussion on that topic. Submit your comments or questions to C. Williamson at firstcity.org no later than 6:00 PM on July 28th. For call-in options related to commenting on agenda items, submit your inquiry to, once again, C. Williamson at firstcity.org. So the first thing we'll do is to join me in the pledge of allegiance followed by silent meditation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And may I, before the moment of silence, I'd like to just keep in mind the passing of John R. Lewis, civil rights icon and congressman for 30 years from Atlanta, Georgia, for all the contributions he's made to bringing our country together and for the advances in terms of voting rights. Just keep his family and keep him in our thoughts and prayers. Thank you. Amen. First order of business is a proclamation, which I will read. City of Leavenworth, Kansas, this is a proclamation for the National Farmers Market Week, August 2nd through 8th. Proclamation, whereas the Leavenworth Farmers Market offers consumers farm-fresh, affordable, convenient, and healthy products such as fruits, vegetables, cheeses, herbs, flowers, baked goods, meat, and whereas farmer markets serve as an integral links among urban, suburban, and rural communities, affording farmers and consumers the opportunity to interact; and whereas the popularity of farmers markets continues to rise as more and more consumers discover the joys of shopping for unique ingredients sold directly from the farm in their freshest possible state; and whereas farmers markets play a key role in developing local and regional food systems that support the sustainability of family farms, revitalize communities, and provide opportunities for farmers and consumers to interact; and whereas Leavenworth Farmers Market offers electronic benefits transfer technology for use by supplemental nutrition assistance program recipients in redeeming their benefits; offers opportunities for senior citizens participating in the Senior Farmers Market Nutrition Program to redeem their checks; and provides unsold produce to community-free food programs; and whereas the United States Department of Agriculture strongly supports and promotes the development, operation, and expansion of farmers markets and other direct-to-consumer marketing activities for agricultural producers providing them with marketing opportunities. Now therefore, I, Myron J. Mike Rizwald, Mayor of the City of Leavenworth, Kansas, hereby recognize farmers markets and the contributions farmers make to daily life in America, and give notice to our citizens that August 2nd through the 8th, 2020, be proclaimed Leavenworth Farmers Market Week. In the City of Leavenworth, encouraging citizens and visitors to celebrate the benefits of farmers markets and the bountiful production of our nation's farmers with appropriate observances and activities. In witness whereof, I set my hand and have affixed the great seal of the City of Leavenworth, Kansas, this 28th of July in the year of 2020. Signed, Myron J. Mike Rizwald. And we will either present this, give this to the farmers market on Saturday morning, or we'll get it mailed, which has been our protocol here for the last three or four months.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to comment for those of you that haven't been to the farmers market, you're missing a treat. It's open every Wednesday from 3:00 to 6:00 in the afternoon, and every Saturday morning, I think they open at 7:00. I don't get there quite that early, 7:00 till noon. Fresh tomatoes, fresh sweet corn, peaches, jellies, honey, what else, Commissioner Bowder?
Everything.
It's nice.
Baked goods.
It's good stuff. And you see a lot of people in town, too. It's just, it's a nice outing, but the food is outstanding, and I sure recommend it.
Thank you, Commissioner Preisinger. We're going to go on to old business and the agenda item under old business. Consideration of previous meeting minutes. Are there any questions or comments on our minutes from our July 14th, 2020 regular meeting from my fellow commissioners? Any comments or questions?
No.
I'll entertain a motion.
Commissioner Leonhard, I move to approve minutes from July 14th, 2020, regular meeting.
Second, Commissioner Bowder.
There's a motion to second on our meeting minutes from our last regular meeting. We're going to begin voting with Commissioner Preisinger.
Aye.
Commissioner Leonhard.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
And I, as the mayor, vote aye. The ayes have it, the vote is four to zero, the motion carries. We've approved the minutes from our meeting of July 14th, 2020. The next agenda item is second consideration ordinances, and the first one is second consideration ordinance 8133, amending section 44 hyphen 87, no parking anytime.
Chief Kitchens, Pat Kitchens, please, Chief will handle this item.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, there are no changes from the initial presentation, and unless there are questions or comments, I think the ordinance is ready to proceed.
Just a quick question, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Are there any new no parking areas, besides that one at the courthouse? Any major ones that people say, oh, my gosh, I didn't realize this one's no parking now? Just offhand on major streets.
I think we've had some emails to the city wanting some consideration about parking at the courthouse in the lot.
Right.
If we're going to eliminate parking on the street, to making that available to the general public. But I don't know that we would have the purview to do that. I think that would be a county.
That's not our call.
County issue, but no, other than that, no.
The major one, of course, is Fourth Street on that block on the west side of the courthouse. You no longer can park there. Is that correct?
Yes, the west side of the courthouse from Custer to Choctaw.
But it is the east side of the street.
But it would be, yeah.
Walnut to Custer?
Yes, Walnut to Custer.
Walnut, not Chestnut, sorry.
Yeah, that's just, that's, that's, that's a second consideration. This requires, any questions for the Chief?
Well, and I don't know if it's really a question, I guess for Chief Kitchens. I don't know, when this is, when would that be implemented?
So if you pass it this evening, we would proceed with marking, which is usually 10 to 14 days, something like that. But if you recall, the ordinance says there's no parking on either side of Fourth Street all the way through town.
Right.
This is an exception, this is one exception denoted. So that language would be removed, and then it would be a function of making sure it's marked properly, no parking right there. And then the usual way that I proceed with this sort of thing would be some sort of period of time where we're warning people, having a lot of discussion with people initially before we're into an enforcement function of citing people, you know, to give a good getting used to period, I think is maybe the right way to describe that. I think since it's been that way for quite some time, we'd be, you know, approaching it very cautiously for the first period of time.
Right. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
This ordinance on second consideration requires a roll call vote, so we will begin voting with Commissioner Leonhard.
Aye.
Commissioner Preisinger.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
And as the mayor, I vote aye. The ayes have it, the vote is four to zero. So we've approved ordinance 8133, which is no parking anytime on Fourth Street. Next, second consideration ordinance is 8134, rescind special use permit, 1922 Fifth Avenue.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, this was generated by the property owner at that location. This was a childcare that had a fire, and they have been asked to rescind their special use permit, and they intend to refile a new one for a new location. So there's been no changes since the first reading.
Any questions or comments for the city manager on this agenda item?
No.
If not, I'll enter, no, we don't need a motion. It's second consideration, we need a roll call vote. We'll begin voting with Commissioner Preisinger.
Aye.
Commissioner Leonhard.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
And I, as the mayor, vote aye. The ayes have it, the vote is four to zero. So we've approved the ordinance 8134. New business, public comment. And so this is for anybody in our audience today who may wish to comment on an agenda item that is not on our agenda. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to a public hearing.
Were there any emails? No emails either, no?
Okay, yeah, good. Should have asked that, since I covered it in my preamble. Public hearing, consideration of tax increment financing, TIF redevelopment, district price chopper redevelopment. So the first thing I need to do is we'll have to open a public hearing. So can I, and I'll entertain a motion to open a public hearing.
Still moved.
Second.
Okay. There's a motion and a second to open a public hearing. We are going to begin voting with Commissioner Leonhard.
Aye.
Commissioner Preisinger.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
And as the mayor, I vote aye. The ayes have it, the vote is four to zero. Motion carries, so we are now in a public hearing. And the next part of this would be staff and citizen comments. Do we have anybody dialing in, or?
We do. I'll introduce the item, and then we'll turn it over in a minute.
Go ahead, Ms. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, I'm excited again to continue the process of the redevelopment of the Price Chopper on Fourth Street. This is a further step. This step is related to one that we took on June 23rd, when we passed a resolution, the governing body passed a resolution stating that the city was considering the establishment of a redevelopment district and setting the public hearing of tonight for the consideration, first consideration of the redevelopment district. So just briefly, what a redevelopment district is, is it allows you to set up a TIF district. It allows you to collect TIF revenue and remit it back to a developer based on allowable uses. TIF districts and the creation of TIF districts and redevelopment districts are governed by state statute, and they are not automatic. They are, they have eligibility criteria. And one of the ways that they, that you can have criteria to be eligible for a TIF district is a showing of blight, that the actions that you are taking are removing blight from the community and improving the community. And so one of the first steps and the steps that Mr. Jim Potter from the Price Chopper team is going to go through tonight is he's going to show you a blight analysis that has been completed by the development, and the commission has to find that they're in agreement, that they accept this finding of blight. We have notified the school district and the Board of County Commissioners because they are taxing jurisdictions in this redevelopment district and this TIF, these TIF property tax dollars would apply to them as well. And keep in mind that this is only growth, not the base that we receive now. So what I'm going to do now is I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Jim Potter, and he's going to go through the facts and findings of the blight analysis. And then at the end, if our city attorney, David Waters, has any comments, if you have any questions of Mr. Potter, Mr. Waters, or myself, we're here to answer those, and then, of course, if there's any questions from the public. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Jim Potter.
Welcome, Mr. Potter. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. I don't know if Pete Haven from our team is going to speak before me. Pete, I don't know if you want to try me real fast. I'll wait until your comments are finished, and then I'll thank you. Great, great, thank you. Mr. Mayor, Ambassador Commissioner, thank you. Jim Potter, with development initiatives, 4501 Paramount Avenue in the city. Just to kind of paint a little picture, next slide, please. Advance the slide.
I think there's just a slight delay, Jim.
Mr. Potter, in the meantime, tell us what your position is with Price Chopper. Again, maybe you did, but it broke up.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Tell us your position with Price Chopper. Maybe you did state that, but it broke up, or I did not quite hear it. Are you the attorney for Price Chopper?
I'm with the company called Development Initiative. No, I did not work for Price Chopper. I'm an independent consultant. We do a lot of work for municipalities and developers throughout the Midwest. So I'm a third-party independent consultant.
I think he's the one who did this analysis. Pretty sure he's the one who did the analysis. Okay, I think we got the slide up, Mr. Potter.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. So we're looking at an existing store, it's about 56,000 square feet, obviously a grocery store, was constructed in 1990, about a little over 30 years today. All improvements to this property are original property. So all the HVAC system, all plumbing systems, electrical systems, all the coolers are constructed, are all original. That originality has led to a deterioration. Some of those systems are currently deteriorating, some are okay. That contributes to a functional obsolescence of the facility. Get into that a little bit later. We do have a vacant liquor store, retail space at the southwest corner of the building, been vacant since 2015. That also contributes to revenue loss to the property. We have a vacant deli space in front of the facility, and that contributes to the revenue loss. The property is adjacent to two properties which have been designated by the Kansas Department of Health and Environment as contaminated properties, and that those have impacted our subject property via groundwater and soil contamination. And we'll stand on that further in my testimony. We do have a new owner of the property, and they are proposing to make improvements and renovate the store and install a strict operations and maintenance program and renovation capital improvement program, of which that does currently not exist. So in the 30 years that this property has been constructed and operated, no operation to make. Next slide, please. So it's important to note that the grocery industry is kind of fickle in this. It's really imperative to keep up with consumer demands and marketplace competition. There's a constant change in the needs of grocery shoppers. Retailers are continually competing for shopper loyalty. And that's even more evident now in the FM online shopping. Local consumer trends also have a direct impact on store design and preparation. And typically, in order to attract and retain that loyal consumer base, grocery retailer typically remodel their stores for three to five years. And keep in mind, that has not occurred at the subject property since construction began. So next slide. So let's look at TIP blighting definition now. The blight definition is in the Kansas statutes, section 12-1770. This is basically a four-part test. So we have the first part here, and so you have to have one, or two, or three, or four. And in this case, one is a predominant, nine factors. So it's, we have a majority of these factors. Substantial number deteriorated, deteriorating structure. Predominance of defective or inadequate street layout, unsanitary or unsafe conditions, deterioration of site improvements, acts of special assessment, delinquencies, defective or unusual condition title, improper subdivision or obsolete blading, existence of condition for condenser life or property, and conditions which create economic obsolescence. And that's the first item to gauge whether property blighted. Next slide. So the second item is that whether a property has been identified by an state or federal environmental agency being environmentally contaminated to an extent that requires any remedial investigation, feasibility study, and remediation, or other similar state or federal action. Keep that in mind, it's really important, because we're going to touch on that here in a little bit. And then the third item is that the property is in flood plain. That doesn't, that's not applicable in this case. And finally, the fourth item is that a governing body has entered the property, either slummed or blighted everywhere. And again, next slide. So here's our matrix for the first case, for the first test. Of those nine items, we did note that six were present, and those have led to an economic and social liability, as well as imperative development of world-class power. Next slide, please. So let's go over these six items that we need to address. This is the components of those factors. We know that substantial number of deteriorated, or deteriorating structures. This kind of goes back to the originality of the property. Keep in mind that all building improvements are original, and that those building systems are not up to modern-day efficiency standards. Original design is not able to maximize current, modern-day shopper experience. The next item is deterioration of site improvements, and original building components lack modern-day efficiency standards. While some of the components, and we know a fair share of the building is in fair condition, structure improvements are still written or written with biture, require updating. And defective or unusual condition title. We have numerous improvements which impacted the property parcel. We have the four or five different easements that go through the project and actually underneath the building itself. We also have the existing structure. It's constructed both of the side yard, yard, and rear yard, 25-inch section. So as it exists now, building is within 25 yards, it's over that 25-yard section. So we need to clear up some of these improvements, because obviously it's not meeting the city code on this. Next slide. So improper subdivision or obsolete land use. And we consider a parking issue for this property an obsolete land use. Currently, there's 200 certain parking spaces, approximately 200 spaces existing. From a market perspective, grocery establishments typically require a parking issue of five or one. That is five parking spaces for 1,000 square feet of structure. And calculating that out, 280 total parking spaces for the total effort of the project, and we only have 200. And secondly, according to Article 5 of Leavenworth, the code that we're in, 2020, parking required for this project is one for 200 square meters, and that would equal 383 parking. So in both scenarios, subject property is under parking. Now, we do have a long-term, fifth-year lease, leaving to the city on adjacent property in the north, which incorporates another approximately 80 parking spaces, which brings our total parking count up to around 280 parking spaces, which is right there on the threshold of being adequate for the project. But however, it's still a little bit under parking. So we noted that to remove our conditions. And then the next condition would mean the existence of, a condition for condenser property by other causes that relate back to the environmental impact of the building. And then finally, we have conditions which create an economic obsolescence. We maintain status quo and do not intend renovation on this site. Site currently generates approximately 13 million annual sales. So we would expect that that annual sales to maintain that level, if not decrease a little bit as time goes on, and as the property continues to age. With property renovation, it's estimated that annual sales would go up by approximately $3.692 million per year for the life of the TIP, which is the 2020 TIP. Current praise value is $1.25 million. And it's anticipated that the increase in praise valuation would be $1.658 million at the end of 2020 period. So these projections show a clear positive impact of taxing business or jurisdictions from the property, which would not occur but for the TIP plan, but for the property. Next slide, please. So the second test we noted was environment. We have two adjacent properties which contributed soil, groundwater, and soil gas contamination to the subject property. Should be noted that one of the adjacent properties, it's in a voluntary cleanup program, which includes the Department of Health and Environment. So the state has taken action on that problem. Contamination's been extensively undermined and documented. There'll be numerous groundwater monitoring and sampling wells, process of their property. Contamination includes, I've listed a bunch of different items here. I'm no expert, but we have PCDs, hydrocarbons, ore form, petroleum hydrocarbons, drip-reactive metals, well-of metal arsenic. These were all found at or above KDHE testing levels. As a result of that, property has applied coordination to the environmental liability release early to the Department of Health and Environment, and that occurred in December of 2015. But again, the state has taken clear action on an adjacent property which has contributed to contaminants to our subject property. And the state has taken clear action on our property as well. Next item. Next slide. So again, this is our matrix. We did note that six of the original nine were present. And finally, next slide. So just to summarize, it is our opinion that property does qualify as a blighted property under the statutes defined in section 12-1770. Next slide. And that would conclude my report. If you have any questions, answer any questions.
Any questions from commissioners?
I'm just amazed at how many toxic compounds were up there. I guess it's been flooded back there and everything else, though, too, hadn't it? Several times.
Yeah, 30 years old.
So the mitigation of, and we don't need to get into a lot of detail here in terms of the contamination, but what should we expect going forward? This, these contaminated areas, will they have to be mitigated as part of this project?
Yeah, I'll, this is the city manager, Paul Kramer. I'll shed a little light on this, and we do have Mike McDonald on the line, I think, too, but I think I can handle it. So the areas that he's talking about are actually adjacent to the property that Price Chopper has, and it is actually city property. And that, this is an old city garage and some other industry that was in that area. When he talked about the parties having entered into a voluntary cleanup program with KDHE, that is the city that has entered into that agreement with KDHE. So it will not affect this project at all, and the city is working with KDHE on some remediation.
Okay. Is that behind Price Chopper right now, that area?
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
So we, I don't have any further questions from Mr. Potter. If my fellow commissioners do not, do we, are we going to accept some input from citizens?
Yeah, if anybody's here for this item.
Is anybody here in the audience who wants to comment on this public hearing and this agenda item, the redevelopment of Price Chopper?
Right, and I'll mention that Pete Haven, the council, lead counsel for this project with Supermarket Developers, is on the line. I don't know, Pete, if you had anything you wanted to add tonight?
I agree, Mayor, and members of the commission. My name is Pete Haven. I represent Supermarket Developers, and my office is at 6201 College Boulevard in Allen Park. And tonight with me, I have Steve James, and Joel Riggs, and Jeff Olson from Supermarket Developers, San Jose County. Developers, answering any questions you might have. And as I said, I'll be brief. I wanted to thank the staff for its encouragement through this process, and we believe that with the investment of $12 million, which we were prepared to make, we will make this Price Chopper into a world-class store for the citizens of Leavenworth. We purchased the property in March. We intend to have our project finished this year. And as Jim mentioned, we have built into our, both our plan and the lease we have with our operator, to require current deferred and future maintenance of the property so that in the next three decades, we won't have this problem again.
Good.
So we respectfully request creation of a district tonight, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Okay, that's helpful, because I did wonder about that in terms of going forward, because, you know, it's hard if you wait all those years and then decide to modernize. So that's a very important aspect of what you were able to share with us, sir. Any questions or comments from commissioners before we find if any citizens have dialed in? Have any citizens dialed in for this? Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Mr. Commissioner Priceinger, Mr. Haven, or I think this should be directed to you. You mentioned that you hope to have this project completed by the end of the year. Are you still sticking with that? You've got, you know, 120 days or so to do that? Maybe, I'm sorry, 150 days, five months? Can that still be done?
That is our plan. We have ordered the equipment, it should arrive in August, and we expect the store to remain open while we're doing our renovations, but we believe they can be completed by the end of the year.
That sounds very aggressive. I hope it can be done. It's a very important store to this town. It's the furthest north store, grocery store in the city, obviously, and we think it'll add a lot. Well, you know what the competition has done, and this will bring you up to the competition. But that's your business, not mine.
Mr. Mayor, this is David Waters, City Attorney, if I may.
Go ahead, David.
Thank you very much. I do want to remind the commission that running are in the process here. The TIP is kind of a two-part process. I mean, we're in the first part, which is the creation of a TIP district. So I just want you to know, tonight, we're not approving any specific plan of any kind tonight. We're establishing the district, creating it, then there will be notifications that go to the county and the Board of Education. They have the right to review, they have the right to veto the creation of a district. Assuming that district is created and that it is not vetoed by the other tax jurisdictions, we'll be coming back to the city commission with what is called a TIP project plan, which will have more detail about the actual work to be done, the dollar amounts. We will be preparing for that meeting later on in this fall, assuming everything goes forward. A development agreement, similarly to probably what you saw with the Fort Gate properties, where we have some performance standards, expectations as to the minimum investment, you know, fuller descriptions of sources of funding and things of that nature. So I do want you to know that this is a two-part process. This is the first one where we're creating the district, and then actually approving the plan itself will come down the road.
And tonight, what we're driving for is to have places on first consideration, to have a consensus on first consideration to create a redevelopment project plan?
No, redevelopment district tonight, and then project plan will be next.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to close the public hearing. We're going to be giving.
I would just know, yeah, again, the fact that it does say if the action required, a consensus plays on first consideration to create a redevelopment project plan as presented, I should say, to create a redevelopment district as presented.
Yeah.
The project plan will be, is the next step. So we'll get that a motion is made, you're, you're putting together the ordinance to create the district this evening, not the plan itself.
Okay.
I understand.
Thanks, David.
Okay, so we're ready to vote on closing this public hearing, so we are going to begin voting with Commissioner Priceinger.
Aye.
Commissioner Leonhard.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
And as the mayor, I vote aye. The ayes have it, four to zero. Motion carries, so we've closed the public hearing. And next is the consensus to place on first consideration to create a redevelopment district as presented. And any, I don't think there'll be any comments or questions, because we've already dealt with that. So do we, I'll begin with Commissioner Leonhard. Are you, you good to go?
Yes.
Consensus?
Aye, yes.
Commissioner Priceinger?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowder?
Yes.
And I, as the mayor, yes, ready to go and move forward with this redevelopment district for Price Chopper property. And, good?
All right, thank you all for participating, Jim and Supermarket Developers team.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good rest of your week. Okay, so we're under general items now on the agenda, and the first one under general items is consider 2020 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant application.
Let's be again our police chief, Pat Kitchens.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, the police departments before the governing body asking for your authority to apply for the 2020 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant in the amount of $24,384. On July the 9th of 2020, the U.S. Department of Justice released the annual Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant local solicitation, and identified the city of Leavenworth, Kansas as eligible for the $24,384. This is an annual grant that we have participated in for many, many years, and it is typically used for us to acquire police equipment, and that would be the plan moving forward this year. The grant application requires the city of Leavenworth to share this allocation with Leavenworth County, as they are considered in the disparate group. The allocation based upon our standard formula would be that the city of Leavenworth would receive $14,384, and the Leavenworth County Sheriff's Department would receive $10,000. The city of Leavenworth must apply for the grant on behalf of both entities. Leavenworth County Sheriff intends to use that for police equipment as well, and I attached Sheriff Dettke's email communication agreeing to the formula. It requires a couple of things. One, for you to authorize the police department to apply for the grant using those dollar amounts that we talked about. Further, it requires you to authorize the mayor, the city manager, and the city attorney to all sign a local inter-agreement with Leavenworth County, which is part of the grant process. And so I would be asking for those actions this evening.
So there's the two actions, basically, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions or comments for the police chief?
I do. Commissioner Leonhard, you got Chief Kitchens? So this is an annual grant, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So is the amount different every year?
Yes, ma'am, by a little bit.
How is that?
It's calculated by the justices, by the Justice Department. They make an allocation overall to the state of Kansas, and then it's broken down by individual counties and cities, and then we get specifically identified for that, for a particular amount, and then we're always grouped with Leavenworth County Sheriff's Department.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
The amounts are broken down on the next page.
Right. Can I ask the city manager, should it be one motion with two parts, or two motions for this particular?
One motion with two parts would be fine.
All right. Any other comments or questions for the Chief Kitchens? And basically, the language there for the motion is on that second page of the policy report, motion action. Could I entertain a motion, please, on this agenda item?
I move this, Commissioner Bowder, I move to authorize the police department to apply for the 2020 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant in the amount of $24,384, of which $10,000 will be given to the Leavenworth County Sheriff's Office.
And then the second part?
And then, and then further, this action requires the city manager and city attorney to sign an inter-local agreement with Leavenworth County.
And the mayor.
Further, it requires the mayor to sign an additional document entitled Certifications and Assurances by the Chief Executive of the Applicant Government.
Okay, long motion, but I think we've got it.
Can you read that again? I second.
Okay.
You memorized it, didn't you?
There is a motion and a second on this particular agenda item. We are going to begin voting with Commissioner Priceinger.
Aye.
Commissioner Leonhard.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
And as the mayor, I vote aye. The ayes have it. Motion carries, four to zero. So we've approved the police department applying for this particular grant, and also the development and signing of an inter-local agreement with Leavenworth County. I mean, essentially, that's what we've done. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, next agenda item is Resolution B-2258, Set Public Hearing to Consider Community Improvement District CID Luxury and Imports.
Our assistant city manager, Taylor Tetter, will handle this item.
Hello, Mr. Better, how you doing?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner. The item before you is a resolution to set a public hearing on August 25th for the creation of a community improvement district, which is commonly referred to as a CID. And what a CID is, just as a brief refresher, it's an extra sales tax that is placed on that district to help pay for project improvements for anything related to that district. So I've been working with the owner of Luxury Imports for quite some time now, Ted Ray, and they are looking to expand as their business has been very busy.
Good.
Not just in the sales, but with service and powder coating of wheels. They've branched off into that and some other items. So they purchased a property from the bank right next door, and this is a three-phase project that they're looking at doing. The first two phases are additional parking so that they can have more inventory, along with stormwater improvements and water quality and water quantity approaches to those. And then the third phase would be a new building on that additional land, and then renovation of their current structure that they already have on the corner. So in, in working with him, he requested to go ahead with CID at .45% to help pay for some of those project improvements. This will not only benefit, it'll benefit the city as well, because with their increased ability to have more inventory, they'll sell more vehicles. In turn, the city receiving more sales tax, as well as property tax from, from these improvements. So this is the first step in the CID process, and after the public hearing, then you would establish the district with, with other actions. And I'm here for any questions that you might have.
What is the significance of the .45%, Mr. Tetter? That just?
A market-driven business decision by the owner, feeling that that was a reasonable amount for the consumer.
That's on the, like, the incremental?
So what it'll be is, in that district, at that specific property, instead of 9.5% sales tax, you would pay 9.95% sales tax, and that, that amount, that extra .45 cents on the dollar would go to the developer for eligible costs.
Yes. Okay, that's good. I mean, that's a good explanation, so I appreciate it. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Tetter on this particular agenda item? Then I will, I will entertain a motion for adopting this resolution.
Commissioner Leonhard, I motion to adopt Resolution B-2258 to set the public hearing for August 25th, 2020.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to set the public hearing for August 25th, 2020, for adopting, to set the public hearing for August 25th, 2020, for this CID for luxury and imports. We're going to begin voting with Commissioner Leonhard.
Aye.
Commissioner Priceinger.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
And as the mayor, I vote aye. The ayes have it. Motion carries, four to zero. So we've set, approved, adopted Resolution B-2258 to set the public hearing for August 25th, 2020. Thank you.
Steve? Hey, Steve.
The next agenda item is to consider request from Leavenworth Soccer Association fee adjustment for 2020.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, the next two items will be handled by our Parks and Recreation Department Director, Steve Grant. Both of them are related to actions with the Leavenworth Soccer Association, who I believe have two board members here tonight.
Okay.
Three board members, wonderful. I would ask that if somebody wanted to come up and speak, we'll use the podium, if you all want to rotate. So I'm going to let Steve go through the two items. The first one's an administrative adjustment due to COVID and the lack of a spring season, and then the second one is a consideration of a new contract, so I'll turn it over to Steve.
Hello, Mr. Grant.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. Good to be here with you this evening. For well over 20 years, we've had a fantastic operating agreement with the Leavenworth Soccer Association to, to promote, coordinate, administer soccer program for the youth of our community. These agreements generally have been in three-year, three-year increments, with 2020 being, being the final year of the current agreement. At the end of, last week of June, city manager Kramer, myself, met with members of LSA to talk about the upcoming agreement, as well as, as well as what's going on with, with this season and the pandemic and everything. We went with Mr. Riley Anderson, he is the LSA president, the new LSA president, as well as Laura Stermer, she was in that meeting. She is the Leavenworth United Competitive Program Director. That's their premier section of the soccer program underneath LSA. We had a very productive meeting, which as Mr. Kramer indicated, has led to these two items on the agenda tonight. The first, the first item on the agenda deals with the, the current operating agreement calls for a nominal fee to be paid, all the agreements, or for a nominal fee to be paid to the city. For 2020, that amount was to be $8,250. With the pandemic as such, LSA had to cancel their spring season, as we've seen so many things need to be canceled. So they had a verbal request to the city to, to make an adjustment to that fee owed to the city for the year 2020, and just a simple 50% reduction as a result of, they do a spring and a fall season, so, so basically, they're doing half of what they would normally do a year with that. So the, so our recommendation, staff recommendation, is to go ahead and reduce the fees by 50% owed to the city by LSA. We would also, in addition, we would recommend city commission approval to make such an adjustment should this happen later this year in the fall, if there need to, need to cancel again, and that would alleviate us needing to come back and do this. So that's, that's the first item for motion this evening.
Does anybody from the Leavenworth Soccer Association want to come up and comment, or please feel free to do that up at the podium, I believe?
Yes, sir. Just briefly, he covered it very well. It's very simple. We, we had things laid out. It cost us money, giving money back to the people. We were very fortunate in our program that we hadn't started our season yet, so we hadn't sunk any funds.
Yeah.
And so, and moving into this fall, we are running registration, but we have not yet charged anybody, because we're waiting to see how this is going to turn out.
Yes, sir.
I believe we have a mark on the roll of about the 20th of August to do it, but we appreciate your consideration on this.
Would you identify yourself, please, sir?
Sir?
Identify yourself.
Sorry, sir, I'm Mr. Riley Anderson.
Okay.
Okay, I'm your president of the.
You're the president of the LSA?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for the update. So you are, I'm sorry, you're making your decision on 20th of August, a go-no-go decision on the fall?
Correct. That's going to be based on the number of registrations. You know, if we have enough, we will, we will look at how we can handle them, whether it's a standard package that we normally do, or they love to play. If we can make adjustments, we'll make it go. But then again, you know, parents are concerned, so we left it open for.
Sure. Hope you can do it. Thank you, Mr. Riley. Any questions or comments for Mr. Grant at this point on this particular agenda item? If not, I'll entertain a motion?
I move approval of the request from the Leavenworth Soccer Association to reduce the fees owed to the city in the amount of $4,125.
Second.
I wasn't finished yet.
Yeah, I know.
Don't take a breath.
I'm going to come over there and kick your butt.
I know. Give someone a chance.
I also move that the City Commission approve for city staff to make a similar adjustment later this year should the cancellation of the fall season be required due to pandemic.
Now?
Yes, sir.
Second. Okay. There's a motion and a second on this particular agenda item. And we are going to begin voting with Commissioner Preisinger.
Aye.
Commissioner Leonhard.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
And as the mayor, I vote aye. The ayes have it. Four to zero. Motion carries. So we've approved the motion associated with this agenda item. Okay. Similar one, Mr. Grant's still up, and it's the consideration, no, consider new Leavenworth Soccer Association agreement.
Mayor and Commissioner, so the, the current agreement expires July 31st. As I stated before, it is for three years. We are looking to have, enter into a new three-year agreement with LSA. And during our meeting, we had a very productive meeting. The LSA members came to us. They obviously have concerns about enrollment and, and the future participation levels. So they, they came with some requests regarding fee structure, both in the amount and then as well as I'll, as I'll talk about here briefly, when the fee payments are made. First, they require, or they requested a reduction in the amount paid to the city. We had a really good conversation discussing both their worries regarding the pandemic and, and reduced enrollment as, as, as well as wanting to keep fees as, as low as possible for the, for the citizens, which is always our, our goal as well in all of our programs. And then, and then we also discussed what it costs to, to maintain and, and from a maintenance standpoint as far as supplying the, the fields and everything. So after, after much discussion, we came to a, an agreement for a total of $8,000 annually. That, that would be a reduction from before where it was 8250, as you recall, I said, for this year. And the other request they had is, is that it's not a one lump sum pay. They'd like to do a, a payment at the end of each season. That sets up better with their, with their fee schedule, which on our, you know, on our end, it doesn't really matter for us. So we did not have an issue with that. So that would, so that would be, they would pay us $4,000 at the end of each season, spring season and fall season. So with that, staff recommends that the City Commission approve the ability for the city manager and staff to enter into this agreement with the Leavenworth Soccer Association as written. So is that any questions you might have?
Any questions or comments from Mr. Grant? And does anyone wish to come up? Any, any need to come up on this one? Yeah, okay. Pretty straightforward, but just wanted to give you the opportunity if, if you chose to take it. Any other questions or comments?
No.
If not?
Mr. Commissioner, this is where we wanted to have them authorize you to sign the agreement?
Yeah, so to make sure the motion is to authorize the city manager to sign the agreement with the Leavenworth Soccer Association. Sometimes it's the mayor signs it, sometimes it's the city manager, and this one was the city manager.
So we need to make that part of the motion?
Yeah, and I believe, I don't know if it's in there or not.
Okay, I move, I, okay.
Sorry.
I move approval of the agreement with the Leavenworth Soccer Association as written and authorize the city manager to sign.
Aye, second.
Okay. There's a motion and a second on this particular agenda item. We are going to begin voting with Commissioner Leonhard.
Aye.
Commissioner Preisinger.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
And as the mayor, I vote aye. The ayes have it. Motion carries four to zero. So this particular agenda item is, is approved, which is the approval of the agreement with the Leavenworth Soccer Association and the authority of the city manager to sign that agreement.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the board members. It's been a, a really good experience getting to know some of the new board members.
Thank you.
And really excited.
Thank you. It's been a good serving.
We wish you the very best. And soccer is a big deal in this city, both in the city of Leavenworth, of course, and, and Fort Leavenworth. So we're, we're very, you know, just hoping that you can have the fall season. And we're big supporters of Leavenworth Soccer Association and, and all your players and their, and their parents and family. So thank you for coming tonight. Well, the other two board members that are here, will they come up and just introduce themselves so they can see you on TV?
Great. I came from a soccer field, so I'm not dressed right, but.
You're dressed fine.
I'm Laura Stermer. I'm the director of the competitive side, which is the Leavenworth United Soccer Club. And we play in all green proudly for Leavenworth down in Kansas City Metro in Long Island. Yay.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Hi, I'm Margaret Howard, and I'm currently the adult coordinator for Leavenworth Soccer, assisting with the recreational soccer division, so.
Thank you, Margaret.
Thank you, Ms. Howard. Thank you. Good luck. I hope the season can get going. Yep. Next agenda item is the consideration of a memorandum of understanding with the city of Lansing for K-7 slash Eisenhower Road improvements cost share.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, before the governing body, tonight is a memorandum of understanding or an MOU between the city of Leavenworth and the city of Lansing. As a reminder, those two entities were awarded $1.68 million from the Kansas Department of Transportation for improvements, essentially a complete rebuild of the intersection at Eisenhower Road and K-7. This was a grant that we scored very high on because of the intersection's safety concerns. And so we are happy to receive this grant and design is underway. The project is likely to exceed the grant amount. So in that case, and when anytime any two jurisdictions are pairing on a project, it's important to have a memorandum of understanding to outline the project. So this was a very good process with myself and Tim Vandal, the city administrator in Lansing, as well as our public works directors, to come up with the outline of how we would split those costs not covered by state grants. And so I'm not going to go through the entire agreement, but basically we're splitting the design portion, half, 50, 50/50. But then on the construction costs outside of K-dot matching funds, it will be a two-thirds Lansing, one-third Leavenworth mix. The, we will also do the same, two-thirds, one-third, Lansing being two-thirds and Leavenworth being one-third on inspection costs for the project. And then any land purchase or land requirements would, would be handled by the jurisdiction in which the land, land lives, I suppose. As a reminder, three of those corners are the city of Lansing's corner, the QuickTrip, the Tractor Supply, and then the south-east corner. The Shoebox is Lansing, and then the city obviously has luxury and imports. Utility relocation is an item that we focused on quite a bit. Part, as part of this project, going southbound, there'll be a dedicated westbound lane. And there's power poles along the right-of-way there that run all the way up to Home Depot, all the way through to the intersection, and those are going to have to be relocated. So we specifically called out that the relocation costs will be paid essentially by Lansing, that area 1,225 feet from the intersection to the north line of the Home Depot property. And they agreed to those costs. So that's the basis and the outline of the MOU with Lansing for that project is under design now, and the construction is expected to happen in 2021 to improve traffic flow and safety and appearance of that intersection. So that's the, it has been approved by the Lansing City Council and is before you tonight. If you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer those.
I know you mentioned, what's, what was the amount of the, the grant or the money from the state?
1.68 million. And once the design is done, we'll have an engineer's estimate on the total project cost.
Now, you said the project's going to start in 2021, so is that like?
Yeah, they'll put it out. As the design, all, that's a good point. I'll, I'll update the commissioners later this fall on how the design's going and when it's expected to go out to bid in a project timeline.
Okay.
As we have that.
Thank you.
Yes.
Has the company been selected for the design?
Yes, Binish Corporation. And Binish did the, helped us with the data that we needed for the grant application. And so we were able to do a sole source of them to continue with the design.
Okay. So any questions or comments for the city manager on this particular agenda item? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I, I just want to comment that I think it's a very important project. I think this is, the chief could weigh in, but I believe it's the most problematic intersection of Leavenworth-Lansing area. And a heck of a lot of traffic, even more so now with the QuickTrip. And it's sorely needed. I wish it could be done now, but I understand that it'll, it'll be one more year or so. I just hope everyone drives as carefully as possible when they're going through that intersection and keep your eyes wide open.
Any other questions or comments on this particular agenda, agenda item? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the memorandum of understanding with the city of Lansing for the K-7 Eisenhower improvement cost share.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on this particular agenda item. We are going to begin voting with Commissioner Preisinger.
Aye.
Commissioner Leonhard.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
And aye as the mayor, vote aye. The ayes have it. The vote is four to zero. The motion carries, so we've approved that MOU between the city of Leavenworth and the city of Lansing. Thank you. Next agenda item, the bids for 2020 stormwater project.
This item will be handled by our public works director, Mike McDonald.
And before Mr. McDonald gets, we really like having you here, but if you feel like you need to, if you feel like you need to leave, that's totally, totally up to you, officials from Leavenworth Soccer Association, so.
We're not going to force you to stay.
You honor us with your presence, but.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. McDonald, you're up.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, this stormwater project is another one that has been financed by the stormwater fee adopted by the City Commission. This is the third of our larger projects that are related to problems that have existed for an extended period of time in the community. This is a, a replacement of existing stormwater infrastructure on Sixth Avenue, north of Spruce Street. Kind of two general locations. They are connected to one another, however. 805 South Broadway, which is the church on the corner there, they have an alley that runs on the north side of the church, and it has a failed corrugated metal pipe in the alley. And at least one and I think two sinkholes that we have chased around for several years. And related to this, further north on Sixth Avenue is a deteriorated corrugated metal pipe in someone's front yard, and it crosses an alley. And it has also been an orange fence for quite some time. Taylor's flipped up some pictures. This shows the house. It's under the walkway that goes into the house, and then it exits to the center-left of the picture into that brush. There is a drainage channel. Other project, next slide, this is the corrugated metal pipe. It's hard to see in the picture, but there's basically no bottom to that pipe, similar to many that we showed you before. Next picture. This is the Stone Arch portion that is collapsed where the wall was blown out. And you can see where it connects in the center of the picture where the bright dot is. That connects to a corrugated metal pipe that has no bottom in it that we showed you in the previous picture. And the last picture, this is the alley alongside the, the church building that we have it blocked off with concrete, concrete blocks. This project was designed by Napier Engineering, a local firm. And bids were prepared and distributed to the regional planthouses that we do. And we did receive four good bids, which we were very pleased to do that. Mike Cooper is also on the call here this evening, was instrumental in helping pick projects and design things and get it out along with Mike Stephen. The low bid contractors, Pruitt Construction, and I believe they are on the call here as well. Pruitt Construction is a company that we have not worked with directly. However, we are aware that they work further north in the little west, essentially north and west of the Atchison area. And we contacted several references, and they were found to be quite satisfactory. And we welcomed them to the project and recommend that the City Commission award the bid to them for $146,033 and somewhat 20 cents. It is expected that the project would start within 30 days and it'd take about 60 days to complete. And the inspection for this project will be performed by city courses. We look forward to moving on with this project.
Good rundown, Mr. McDonald. Any questions or comments for Mr. McDonald on this particular agenda item?
Just a trivia question, Mr. McDonald. How old is that Stone Arch? Would you guesstimate? I think they're, they're kind of hard to date, but we've been telling people, pretty sure the 1920s or earlier, probably 1890s to 1910. And then at some point, the metal pipe was put in. It was what you did. It was an expedient, this stuff's substantial when it goes in. It just, it gets the corrosion going and materials of the time can destroy very quickly.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from Mr. McDonald? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we accept a low bid received from Pruitt Construction in the amount not to exceed $146,033 and 20 cents for the 2020 stormwater project, and this project number is 2019-921.
Aye, second.
Motion and a second on this particular agenda item. We're going to begin voting with Commissioner Leonhard.
Aye.
Commissioner Preisinger.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
And as the mayor, I vote aye. The ayes have it. Motion carries four to zero. So we've, we've approved and accepted the low bid as, as briefed and presented by Mr. McDonald to the commission. And look forward to that work getting done over the next two, three months. Next are bids for 2020 pavement management program.
Once again, Mr. McDonald, the director of public works.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, staff is pleased to bring you bids received for the 2020 pavement management program. This is a substantially increased program over recent years with the estimated contract amount was $1.8 million. We have prepared plans with the help of our engineer, of Binis Engineering, to mill an overlay approximately five miles of roadways. This includes the city repairs to the city parking lot at the northwest corner of Third and Delaware Street. Inspection, we expected that the inspection of the program may need to be contracted out. But certain circumstances are that we expect to use our own forces to inspect this project due to the timing of it. And we will also be with the remaining funds designed to 2021 pavement management program. The, some specifics are shown in the policy report, and there is a, is a map, I believe, that Assistant Manager Taylor has. He can put up the streets that are dark or streets we're going to do something on. But I think it's fair to say that there's no granite seal this year. We're still evaluating how that has impacted our, you know, kind of long-term efforts. But we wanted to do some substantial repairs. The community's been extremely patient as we work through the granite seal effort that we had. You see, the black lines represent essentially a mill and overlay of various streets in the community. We are going back to look at four pole sacks that we granite sealed in the previous year, previous two years, that the chips just are not sticking well. They continue to be a problem. We're, we're going to address that. I mentioned the parking lot. There is a substantial pavement striping project, which will be all-new striping on Fourth Street from Limit Street to Metropolitan Avenue. And there'll be some other limited pavement striping at various intersections within the community. We did have several alternate plans prepared for the bid. There, early in the COVID situation, there were some extremely low bids that several communities received. Ours were nice, but they weren't quite that nice. And we, we do have a proposal to accept, get to my, we recommend that the City Commission approve the base bid along with bid alternate number five, which was, tell me, Mike, that was Tonganoxie Road. Is that correct?
Yeah, Tonganoxie.
Yes, it's Tonganoxie Road from Shannon Dowa to Candlewood. So that would be a mill and overlay project. That, that road definitely needs a little bit of a tune-up along with all the others that we've shown. If there are other funds that we underrun or we don't expend for one reason or the other, we will evaluate bringing recommendations to pursue other alternates that were in the bid. Or the project could perhaps be rolled into prototype using some other methods. And if we can't do either of those, any remaining funds will be, show up in next year's project as remaining from this year's project. We do recommend that the City Commission approve this. We do recommend that the City Commission approve this work. Little Joe's asphalt out of Bonner Springs was the low bidder. We have worked with them on and off for many, many years, and it has been very interesting to watch their company develop, and particularly the last 15 years, from a fairly solid subcontractor on many projects to being able to bid a very large project. They have done many similar projects in the area, most notably Lansing's Mill and Overlay Program for the last few years, and we do recommend that the commission approve the bid that they presented. And I know they're here on the call as well, if you have questions of them.
Any questions or comments for Mr. McDonald or representative from the company? Mr. Preisinger?
No. I have none.
I did, you may have covered it. This was off, I'm sorry. I was just wondering, you may have covered it, Mr. McDonald, this pavement management program will also include that city parking lot at the northwest, northwest corner of Third Street in Delaware? Does that, will it include that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And you may have mentioned it, and I had missed it, but it was in our policy paper, so I just wanted to make sure we included that.
Will be improved at the drainage, there's some broken slabs and rough spots in there. It will not be as extensive as our recent parking lot projects, but it will include some water quality features as well as better access for everybody.
Good. Okay. Any other comments or questions for Mr. McDonald? If, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the base bid in alternate five by Little Joe's Asphalt for the 2020 Pavement Management Program in the amount of $1,804,693.90.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. For this particular agenda item, we are going to begin voting with Commissioner Preisinger.
Aye.
Commissioner Leonhardt.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
And as the mayor, I vote aye. The ayes have it. Motion carries four to zero, so we've approved the low bid for the Pavement Management Program for 2020. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Little Joe's still there?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Representative from Little Joe's, and we look forward to the, to the work and getting improved roads in the City of Leavenworth.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is first consideration ordinance, special use permit, 1019 Ottawa.
This is Jackie. Yeah. Okay. Our city planner, Jackie Porter, will handle the next three items.
Okay.
Evening, can you hear me?
Oh, hi.
Yes, we can.
Hi, I'm Ms. Porter, how you doing?
All right. The first item is the first consideration for a special use permit to allow two family dwellings in R16th District located at 1019 Ottawa. The planning commission passed this item five to zero.
And is this Mr. Anaya?
Yes, ma'am, sir.
And what's your address, sir?
My address.
Your address, your home address.
312 West Gilbert.
Okay.
Lansing, Kansas.
Okay. Would you like to, I mean, we've read through the policy report, but would you like to share some information with us, or?
Well, I've just come to answer any questions that might have, or give you some insight of what I want to.
It sounds pretty, pretty, pretty nice in terms of you have, you have some different options, right?
Yes. The first one was just a base option of the plan I saw in the book.
Okay.
And, and what's in there, the one I'm going to do is the last option, which includes putting brick on the front, I'm going to widen the house by three feet on each side of the new addresses.
Good.
And that's a bigger bedroom, that a plan is called for like a nine by 10 bedroom, and you can't put a dresser in there, you can't do anything with it.
Sure.
So I'm going to increase each side by three feet, and that'll get us a room for like a 12 by 10 or something like that, and the master would be a little bigger than that.
Cool.
The master would have his own bathroom, that kind of stuff, and a heavy living room, a dining room, kids in the laundry room, and a one car garage on the front, and then we'll put a couple of carports on the backside.
Okay.
So if there's a family of three, we'll keep the cars off the street, you know, in the parking area.
Good.
And I talked to Jack here, and we're going to put the house setback to 18 foot. There's a couple houses, two of these, that were around 18 foot, and then there's a newer one that was built earlier, about five, six years ago, and it's set back 23, but they already kind of set it right close to what the other house was at, so we're going to set that back until 18 foot.
Okay.
And I have one car garage on the front side of the house, and then on the backside, I guess there's going to be a couple of carports. I'm going to try to put some trees in it, and, you know, dress it up a little bit so it looks, you know, neat in that area. We're changing the original design, had a gift roof, but with a cable roof on the front and then on the back.
Saw some of those designs in the, in the policy packet.
That's kind of what I'm going to do with it, you know, making a nice addition to that area, I hope.
I, I have some concerns.
Okay.
This is, this is in a single-family neighborhood, and have, do, are the neighbors notified about this, and do they have input?
So the notification was sent to property owners within 200 feet of the property, as required by statute. Staff received no comments to, in response to that mailing.
Well, I just have a problem with that, so I'll vote no on that, but that's okay.
Okay.
That's just my own, my own issue on that.
Right, okay. Have you, have you built homes or houses before?
Yeah.
Okay. And have, in, in Leavenworth or in other?
In Lansing.
In Lansing, okay.
I built, well, I built my own house in Lansing.
Okay.
In 1982, and then I built two houses on East Beth Street from the ground up, and I did most of the work myself.
Okay.
I can go, and I'm a veteran in town here, and also do heating here for this in Lansing.
Okay.
So I've got quite a good experience in building houses that I've built.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Anaya or our strategic planner? And just, I think the planning commission did, did, did give a thumbs up on this, what, five to zero, Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So this is first consideration, so we're going to go around and see if we have a consensus, so I'll begin with, hold on a minute. Commissioner Leonhardt.
Just say aye?
Yeah. Are you, are you supportive of this particular?
Yes, yeah, I am.
Of putting this on first consideration?
Especially since the neighbors, what, they didn't have any complaints?
Yeah, to approve the, the special use permit.
Yes.
And Commissioner Preisinger?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowder?
No, no.
And Commissioner Griswold as the mayor? Yes. So we do have a consensus, three votes, so we've approved this, placed, the placing on first consideration to approve the special use permit for 1019 Ottawa.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Okay, thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is, thank you for coming.
Yes.
Next is first consideration ordinance, special use permit, 1906 Cleveland Terrace.
Once again, Jackie Porter, our city planner.
Ms. Porter, go ahead. Ms. Porter, go ahead. I think you're on mute still. Okay, you're good. You're green.
If y'all can hear me, I can't hear y'all. Are we on the next item?
Yes. Can you hear us now?
This is David Waters, City Attorney, I can't hear anything either for the last minute, maybe.
Okay, good. I thought I was going deaf or something.
Do you have any idea, Mr. Tetter? Okay.
Do you hear us now?
Okay, yes, we can hear you.
Mr. Waters, do you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Okay, all right.
Are we on the next item?
Yes.
Jackie, can you hear us now?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
And there was a, Jackie, this is Carrie, there was a consensus on the last item to move forward with that, too.
On the last?
On 14.
On 1019?
On 1019 Ottawa, that's, on 1019 Ottawa, because you said you didn't hear like the last minute of that conversation, correct?
Yes.
So we did, we did have a consensus to move forward on 1019 Ottawa.
Everybody was for it because it was tabled in the first meeting, and to go over the conceptual ideas that he had, and they wanted to see that on the empty lot, and they approved of it five to zero at the last meeting.
Okay. All right, so we're going on to the next item, correct? We're at, 1906 Cleveland Terrace, Ms. Porter.
All right, this is the first consideration for a specific, for a special use permit to allow a two-family dwelling in an R16th District located at 1906 Cleveland Terrace. This is already an existing dwelling, a two-family dwelling at this location, just to, just to get the, have the right specific use on it, and it was, the planning commission passed it five to zero.
And we've seen a couple of these, Mr. Mayor Commissioners, I don't know if it's a change to lending laws or whatever it may be, but they're not conforming, so they're requesting special use permits to essentially be in allowable use within those areas.
Okay.
So that's what this one is, an existing structure.
Got it.
So what are they doing, rehabbing it?
Who knows? They could be selling it, they could be.
Oh, they just want it.
They want an SUP so it's not.
So they can do, so when they go to the bank or title company, there's no red flags. Okay, got it.
Okay. Any questions or comments for Ms. Porter on this particular agenda item? So then we're going to go around and see if we can get consensus on placing this ordinance on first consideration. Commissioner Preisinger?
Yes.
Commissioner Leonhardt?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowder?
Yes.
And Commissioner Griswold as the mayor, I say yes, so we've got four full consensus here for moving forward with this 1906 Cleveland Terrace Special Use Permit. Next, first consideration ordinance, SUP 4320 Hughes Road.
Jackie will continue.
All right, this is a special use permit to allow communication tower located at 4320 Hughes Road. There was a few citizens that appeared against the tower at the planning commission, and the planning commission went ahead and approved this item four to one.
Okay.
Four to one.
I, I thought it was, you know, very, very detailed, is there anybody here to talk, sir, why don't you come up and give us your name and address and, and may give us a little insight on this, although it was a good policy report and there's a lot of detail in there, but go ahead, sir.
Good evening, my name is Glenn Clarky, and I'm with Network Real Estate, the address is 555 Highway in St. Charles, Missouri. We represent AT&amp;T Wireless Communications. We do all their site acquisition and zoning and leasing for AT&amp;T all over the United States. This particular location is an improvement to the AT&amp;T coverage in the area that they currently have. They have a huge hole right there by the VA Hospital, St. John's Hospital and, and St. Mary's College. It was selected because of the, the location where it is, it kind of, the, the ground elevation is surrounded by, by heavily wooded areas, so you won't see the base of the tower at all because it's really surrounded by some wooded areas. And yeah, so they're, they're looking to basically really improve their, their 911 coverage, their wireless coverage and their internet coverage in the area. This, this particular tower will cover about a six to seven mile radius round that will cover, you know, like I said, the college, the VA hospital, and, and a lot of residents will get a much improved coverage and much needed coverage from this tower.
Is that both for like broadband plus cell phone usage?
Yeah, it'll be for everything, yeah.
Okay. And I noticed that there was, other providers, technology providers, that there's room in this site?
This tower is, is built to, if, if, if two, if, it'll, it'll carry two more carriers on, and the lease space that we have is big enough for their equipment also.
Good.
And this also will greatly improve your, your 911 system, too, because this will all have 911 capabilities.
Okay.
I have a question. How long does that take to put one of those up?
From when they begin construction?
Uh huh.
Probably, it, it's going to take about six to eight weeks. It's pretty quick when they, when they start.
Any other quest, any other questions or comments? I did have a question for Ms. Porter in terms of the, the one person who voted against it. Do you remember what the, what the objection was as far as if that's appropriate to ask, or?
The planning commissioner did not comment on why she didn't approve.
Okay, all right. Just wondered. Okay. Any other questions or comments? If not, I'll, we're going to, this is, we need to go around the horn in terms of placing an ordinance on first consideration, we need a consensus for this approval of special use permit, and so we are going to begin with Commissioner Leonhardt.
Yes.
Commissioner Preisinger?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowder?
Yes.
And as the mayor, I, I say yes, we need, I'd like to move forward.
Thank you.
So we've got a consensus.
Thank you.
Place this ordinance on first consideration. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Take care. Next is first consideration ordinance, coronavirus relief funding.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, as you have been tracking the CARES Act stimulus dollars provided by the US Congress for various uses throughout the coronavirus pandemic, whether that's business loans or any number of other programs that that stimulus dollars went to, one of those has been relieved to local governments, and the state of Kansas received money from the federal government, they held it for quite a while, but finally put a committee together, and they've released $19,204,954 to Leavenworth County, and they've put the county in charge of administering or authorizing those funds to the municipalities within the county and funds to themselves. Based on the formula, formula created by the state, the City of Leavenworth is eligible for $6,757,039 in CARES Act relieved funding. So there's two parts now that the city has to undertake to be able to start receiving or be given, granted those funds. The first is we have to pass the ordinance created herein, this is required by the state, this is sort of a template that all cities are passing in ordinance, and the second thing that the city has to do, which is not before you tonight, but just to give you the full picture of this item, is create a spend plan of eligible items that is submitted to the county, and then the, so then the city would submit invoices or receipts, and they would be reimbursed from that pot of money, that $6.7 million pot of money that the county is holding for the City of Leavenworth. We've actually had a very good relationship with the county related to this. We've already sent them a draft of a spend plan with a number of items and programs and ideas, and they've given us very good feedback, and so we'll finalize that spend plan, and, and it needs to be to them by August 6th, and as part of becoming eligible to receive those funds, it is required that we pass this ordinance. So the ordinance is before you tonight on first consideration, and if you have any questions related to this, or the CARES Act funding, or the spend plan, I'll do my best to answer those.
There's, I don't, there's no number for this particular ordinance at this, at this time, Mr. Kramer?
No.
First consideration.
They'll have one for second consideration.
Mr. Kramer, you said you have to have the spend plan into the state by August 6th?
I have to have it to the county by August 6th, because the county has to have their spend plans to the state by August 25th, so they have to.
We don't, we don't meet again until August 11th, we can't vote on that.
The commission wouldn't vote on the spend plan because you would have to authorize any expenditures over 25,000 anyway.
Okay, so.
Yeah, so we can't, we put eligible activities so that, essentially baskets of dollars that we would be eligible for, but any expenditures of those funds would come before the commission.
Okay, so we're just doing a consensus tonight, we can vote on it on August 11th, but meantime, you'll put a spend plan to the county.
I'll, I'll, yeah, so you'll see this tonight, and then at your next meeting on the 11th, you'll pass this ordinance, but before that, I'll, I'll, we will submit a spend plan to the county.
And it's all of me?
Yes.
Yeah, because it's due August 6th, right?
Right, the spend plans of the county, right.
Okay. Any questions or comments for the city manager at this point? So we need to, we're going to go around the horn here to determine whether we have a consensus to place this ordinance on first consideration, so I will begin with Commissioner Preisinger.
Yes.
Commissioner Leonhardt?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowder?
Yes.
And as the mayor, I say yes, so we've placed that on first consideration, we're good to go there, and thank you. It's an important, an important action item, so thank you. Next is first consideration ordinance levy, special assessments unpaid 2018, manual storm. manual stormwater fees.
The next three items will be handled by Kerry Collins, the deputy city clerk.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, Commissioner, commissioners. We're gonna talk about first about the manual stormwater fees. Back in two thousand eighteen, when the stormwater fee was approved, we had sent the list of residents for the stormwater fee to go on the taxes. When we developed that list inadvertently, two hundred addresses were left off. So the city clerk and the public works department worked together and sent invoices to those two hundred property owners. Of the two hundred, fifty-five have not paid so far, so we're requesting your approval to add those to their twenty-twenty property taxes as a special assessment. It was a GIS glitch when we pulled the address, that's why we billed those two hundred separately. And they were given installment plan, basically, to, you know, make two payments, or make payment, second payment, but fifty-five still have not paid, and that's what that attachment A to the ordinance is, approximately a little over six thousand dollars.
Right.
And I want to emphasize, this would not be the first they've seen of this. They were all contacted shortly after the air was missed and said, hey, here's what happened, everybody else is paying this, and these fifty-five just have not, have never paid for that.
Okay.
Any questions or comments for Ms. Collins? So then we need to see if we have a consensus to place this particular agenda item and special assessments on first consideration, so we will begin with Commissioner Leonhard.
Yes.
Commissioner Preisinger?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowder?
Yes.
And as the mayor, I say yes, so we've got a consensus.
Thank you.
Put it on first consideration and move forward to the next step.
Thank you.
Thank you. I guess you're gonna do the next one, Ms. Collins?
Yes, sir.
First consideration ordinance levy, special assessments demolition costs.
Yes, sir, thank you. This is houses that have already been demolished, and there's four properties listed on the policy report. Those four property owners were mailed an invoice and given thirty days to pay the invoice. The invoice was mailed certified, return receipt mail. After those thirty days, we sent that to the register of deeds to have that document recorded for that dollar amount for that property. And at this time, we're asking for your permission to take this to, to take this to the county to have it added as a special assessment on their taxes. It lists the property owners, the actual cost, so altogether thirty-two thousand three hundred and sixty-nine dollars and one cent for the four properties total, and they're kind of itemized on there for you per property, what that cost the city to do.
Would those demolitions have taken place in twenty nineteen or earlier this year?
They, they were earlier this year.
Okay.
I think we cleared up all of twenty nineteen, we were able to catch all of twenty nineteen last year and get those to you. But I believe, I believe Paul, these were all in twenty twenty as well. I can check before, I can check before second consideration.
Yeah, well, it's not, I just wondered as a point of information, but I thought maybe they were from, you know, the list of structures that we considered in twenty nineteen, but they may have been demolished in twenty twenty, but I think maybe they were from the list of twenty nineteen.
Yes, yes, sir.
I don't know for sure, but that's what I'm thinking.
Normally when we do a demo, don't the charges just automatically go on their taxes?
No.
We do this every year, the governing body has to do it.
We give them an option, we send them a bill and say, go ahead, pay it, if you don't, obviously go through this.
Or it's gonna go on your taxes, yeah.
Okay, okay.
And that's clearly outlined on the invoice that we sent.
Right, okay, thank you.
So any questions or comments for Ms. Collins on this particular, so we need, this is first consideration.
Yes, sir.
For an ordinance levying, levying special assessment for the city's cost to demolish certain structures. So we are gonna begin with Commissioner Preisinger.
Yes.
Commissioner Leonhard?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowder?
Yes.
And as the mayor, I say yes, and so we've got consensus on that first consideration and moving to the next step on that particular agenda item.
Thank you.
First consideration ordinance levy, special assessment nuisance fees, that's the next agenda item.
Sir, this, I thank you, this one, the code enforcement staff does a lot of the grunt work on this where they'll go out and inspect the properties. This is basically mowings, and sometimes trees on the property, if you see the bigger dollar amounts on that attachment A, sometimes multiple mowings at one property. However, the city clerk's office works closely with code enforcement, and those invoices are mailed out to the property owners, they have X amount of time to pay the city. These are all the outstanding fees that have not been collected by the city that we're asking your approval to send to the county to have added as special assessments to the properties listed on attachment A. Total amount of a hundred and six thousand four hundred and eighty-one dollars and thirteen cents, and that might be adjusted, Commissioner, by the time it comes back to you on second consideration, because we still are accepting payments at this time until it does, if you do approve, until it does go to the county.
Okay. Any questions or comments for Ms. Collins on this particular agenda item? So hearing done, then we have to see if we have a consensus to place this special assessment for the city's lot clearing costs and administrative fees on first consideration, so we are going to begin with Commissioner Leonhard.
Yes.
Commissioner Preisinger?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowder?
Yes.
And as the mayor, I say yes, so we've got consensus for moving forward with the first consideration, and we'll look forward to the next step on that. That completes, other than the consent agenda, and that is the next agenda item, and I will turn that over to Commissioner Leonhard.
Commissioner Leonhard, I move to approve claims for July eleventh, two thousand twenty through July twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty, in the amount of four hundred ninety-eight thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eighty-seven cents. Net amount for payroll number fifteen, effective July seventeenth, two thousand twenty, in the amount of three hundred fifty-three thousand nine hundred and ninety-four dollars and ninety-eight cents, includes police and fire pension, in the amount of eleven thousand eight hundred thirty-nine dollars and thirty-six cents.
For a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and second on this consent agenda. So we're gonna begin voting with Commissioner Preisinger.
Aye.
Commissioner, Commissioner Leonhard?
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder?
Aye.
And as the mayor, I vote aye. The ayes have it, the vote is four to zero, the ayes have it. Motion carries, so we've approved the consent agenda for this evening's city commission meeting. Thank you, Ms. Leonhard. So I think that's it for agenda items, so we're gonna go around, and I'll start with Mr. Kramer. Anything for the good of the order?
Nothing tonight.
Okay. Commissioner Leonhard?
No.
Commissioner Preisinger?
Yeah, a couple of things. I spent most of the day with the first judicial district nominating commission. There's eight of us on this commission, four laypeople, four attorneys from Leavenworth and Atchison counties. We have a judicial opening in the first judicial district. Judge Gibbons retired two weeks ago. So it's our job to interview applicants, attorneys from Leavenworth and Atchison that made application to become a judge. We then select three, send them forward, we consider to be the three best applicants, send them forward to the governor. The governor has ninety days to make the appointment, and normally that takes eighty days or so, because we do a lot of background checks, but then there's complete KBI check and a few other things, and historically, the governor takes nearly their ninety days. The three applicants we sent forward were Ms. Joan Loudon, she currently works in the county attorney's office, Ms. Kita Kelly, she's in private practice, and Mr. Mike Jones, who's in private practice. Those three attorneys, we sent their names forward. Justice Rosen from the Supreme Court was there, and he will hand carry them to the governor tomorrow. But this is open knowledge, paper will probably be covering it tomorrow. So it's a good process, and we do that whenever there's a judicial opening. And it's a lot of work getting their resumes, getting their applications, and we get the packets three, four weeks in advance, we have to do a lot of advanced work. And all, we had six applicants, and they all presented themselves very, very well. Next thing I want to say is, what we accomplished tonight is, I think, a heck of a lot. This is what many of us have been elected to do, to make our city a better place to live, work, invest, and raise a family, as I always say. Couple of things we did. One, we started the process to keep a major grocery store and to improve it, that's huge. We are starting the process to help a major tax-producing entity in town, luxury imports, to improve their property so that they can even become a bigger tax producer for this town. We made adjustments to the youth soccer program, which is huge, that's the biggest, I'm grabbing some numbers here now, but I believe it's the biggest youth participatory sport in town, I would say soccer is, and, you know, we worked, the city manager and Parks and Rec Director worked with them closely, and we enhanced their program. The amount of money on the stormwater project, one point eight million, or whatever the number was, on roads and pavement. Our MOU with Lansing to improve an intersection of Fourth and Eisenhower, a huge intersection that needs a lot of work. And the grant for the police department and the sheriff's department, it's twenty-four thousand dollars that will be coming into this community, fourteen thousand directly into Leavenworth, ten thousand to the county, to help protect and to serve what the police department, sheriff's department does do. And, you know, that's, that's what we're charged to do, and we accomplished a lot tonight. And I think we should be proud of it, and I want people that are watching, if they happen to still be watching, to realize that this is what your government does do, and I think we did it well tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Preisinger.
A lot of good words down.
Commissioner Bowder?
I need to talk about something else this evening. We have, I'm gonna pull my mask down so I can speak better. Take it off, but I won't talk in anybody's direction, I'm far enough away. We have raises in our COVID in the county, and I'm disappointed that when our county health officer strongly supports a mask ordinance in our county, and then the county commission still votes against it, even though we're seeing, and you know this figure better than I do, Mayor, five to six percent every two days rise. We now have, in the, in the community, I'm not talking about the prisons, in the community, we now have four hundred and forty-four in the county and two hundred and two in the city of confirmed COVID. We have mask ordinances in Wyandotte, Douglas Johnson, and Platte County, and I think we have a, we have a draft ordinance here that I think we ought to consider voting on.
And when would we, when would be the projection to vote on it?
Immediately, I think immediately.
Okay, and so are you asking for a consensus to?
Yes, to at least vote on it. I'm not asking you to support it, I know I support it, I'm not asking you to support it, I'm asking you to vote on it.
Right, but that would have to be at a future, future meeting, or?
It would be at a special meeting, our next scheduled meeting is August eleventh, so immediately it would be, would require a special meeting.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Commissioner Bowder?
That's all, that's all I have.
Okay.
That's all I have.
And I appreciate what Commission, I'm gonna start, and then we'll go around and see if there is a consensus in terms of what she has presented. And of course, last week, we had a pretty lengthy discussion of where we were in terms of, and we had decided, at least at that point, to put that particular resolution or ordinance, a draft ordinance, on the shelf, but, you know, no, no commitment to bring it in front of the city commission for a vote. So basically, we were supporting the status quo, talking about at least the number of people within the city wearing masks out in the community improving or increasing, maybe probably not to the degree that most of us or all of us here on the commission would like, but because of some of the big box stores, Walmart, Home Depot, CVS, Walgreens, I mean, I think there has been an increase, can't measure it really, but I do believe there's been an increase, and so that was part of our discussion in terms of trying to, you know, basically stay with the status quo and leave it to the county commission, who has the statutory authority by Kansas law to make, to make the decision about these public health, whether it's requiring masks or other type of issues relating to public health. And I know that we have a responsibility too, to our citizens within the city, and I know that the data is not all that great, but I'm not sure it's that much worse a week later than it is today. And so at this point, I, I don't think I support that, that doesn't mean that every meeting we have, we can, you know, we could revisit it, but, and see what the statistics are. Quite frankly, I wish the county would, I'm not sure, the one statistic they have are the increase in number of cases, but there's no rate of, for instance, people who are tested, how many are coming up positive with respect to the number of cases. I think that would be helpful for us to have that, just as a normal citizen within the county, and I think that maybe they should consider putting that on their website for the one or two metrics that really, you know, make a difference. And it does make a difference in terms of the increase, but that, that graph just keeps going up, you know, every time, every two days, there's, you know, twenty or twenty-two or twenty-three or twenty-four additional cases. So at this point, I am not supporting that, to bring it in front of our commission for a vote, but that doesn't mean that each and every meeting we have, we can't, you know, bring that up again, but that's where I stand.
I'm just, I'm just following, I mean, we, from the beginning, we're following, we were following our governor, we were following our, our county health officer, and our county health officer strongly recommended it, and that's why I spoke up today.
Sure, no, no, very good, and they'll have another meeting tomorrow, and let, and let's.
They'll probably discuss it again tomorrow.
No, but I have, I'm glad you brought it up, and that's where I, you know, stand at this particular point in time. Commissioner Bowder, I'm, Commissioner Leonhard.
Well, I know we brought the mask ordinance up last week, and we voted, you know, unanimously to shelf that at the time.
We didn't vote, we just.
Well, not vote, but I mean, we agreed, we agreed to shelf it, and I mean, I believe, I mean, it's only been a week, so, and I had to sit and think about it, you know, it hasn't been a long enough time. I want more time to evaluate new data. So at this time, I say no.
Well, the county said they wanted to wait and see how, how it worked with having more businesses like Walmart have masks, but what are you, what are you looking for? You looking for a fifteen percent increase, a twenty percent increase, a hundred percent increase before you make the decision to go along with the governor's mandate? I mean, I know she did not mean to have our county exempted, she meant to have counties in western Kansas that have no COVID exempted.
No, that's, those are some very good points, and, what was I gonna say? And I did notice, I think, the data they released yesterday, there was one additional person that has been hospitalized, and I know that's one of the metrics that Mr. Jamie Miller, the public health officer for the county, is looking at. I don't know what his, it gets to, what level it gets at when he once again recommends that, to the county commission, that they require masks. I don't, I don't know what'll happen tomorrow, but they'll, they'll have another meeting, and I believe he's gonna be there along with Dr. McBratney to talk to the county commission again. Commissioner Preisinger?
I'm in favor of bringing it to a vote. We did have the ordinance, we had the draft ordinance that we approved, if you will, last week, and there was talk about shelving it, or whatever, I mean, it's there, we could not vote, it could not, we could not vote last week. I, I think we quit walking the fence and let's vote, but we don't have a consensus to go that far.
Yeah.
But my opinion is that this needs to be brought to a vote.
Okay. All right, so we don't, we don't have a consensus, I think it's something that we need to bring up, and I'm sure each, each and every, each and every meeting, I have no problem with that at this point, I just felt it was, we had, last week, we had our discussion, and it's only been a week since then, I, not that the data is great, I understand it's not, but I don't think it's gotten dramatically worse from what we had, you know, discussed last week. So it's two to two, we don't have a consensus, so that's where we stand on that particular issue.
Thanks for hearing me out, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
One thing I'd like to reiterate that I've done every week, I just plead with people to wear a mask. The numbers in Kansas City, Missouri have grown, Jim. to wear a mask. The numbers in Kansas City, Missouri have grown geometrically or exponentially here in the last few days. Wyandotte County, and, you know, we're eight miles from Wyandotte County. There's travelers go back and forth. I mean, just please, please, wear a mask. Just, it's not gonna cure it, but every medical professional worth any salt at all says it will help. It is something simple to do. Please do it. Take care of yourselves. Take care of your neighbors. Take care of your kids, your grandparents. Take care of this country. It's the patriotic thing to do. It's the Christian thing to do. Take care of your neighbor. Please wear a mask.
Yeah, Commissioner Leonhard, to add to that, I know, you know, we're at, highly recommend, and like you say, there's more than just one component of the mask. You know, there's been a, you know, I think, a little bit of, because of the social distancing of the young people, you know, they're not doing it. They're having parties at the lake or whatever. And hand washing and hand sanitizing as well. If you all, you know, try to do the best.
The other thing I've heard anecdotally, and once again, I don't, we don't have Mr. Miller, Jamie Miller, in front of us, but that a lot of these recent positive cases has been caused by family, you know, family, large, larger families getting together. And so I, it's, it's complicated. I got it. And that's, that's where we are this evening. And anything else from commissioners as far as this particular meeting? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
There's, there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to adjourn. We'll begin voting with Commissioner Leonhard.
Aye.
Commissioner Priceiger?
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder?
Aye.
And as the mayor, I vote aye. The ayes have it. Motion carries, so we are adjourned.
We have no schedule-